I'd like to welcome you all to the first and only Canby City Council candidate informed by the Canby Area Chamber of Commerce and the Canby Current. So great to see such a great crowd here tonight. I want to thank Cuttsforth Market for hosting us tonight and the other businesses and organizations who have made this possible. I also want to thank all of you for taking time out of your busy lives to be here and take part in democracy and local governance. I'm Tyler Frankie, I'll be your moderator, glorified question asker at tonight's event, but I am aware of the fact that none of you came here tonight to listen to me. So without further ado, let's welcome tonight's candidates. They're going to be introduced in alphabetical order, and that's also how they're seated, starting with Brad Clark.
All right, thank you guys for that. A few notes about tonight's event before we get started. The purpose of this forum is to ensure that each of our candidates is treated fairly and has equal opportunity to share their words and vision with our community. To that end, we have asked all of our candidates to please keep their remarks positive, or let's say constructive, and to refrain from making negative remarks that are directed to any specific person, whether they're here with us tonight or not. We're also asking our audience tonight to follow suit and treating all of our candidates with civility and respect and allowing them to speak. Other than that very appropriate and appreciated applause when our candidates were being introduced, we do ask that you please hold your remaining applause until the end of tonight's event. Thank you for that. We're going to begin with a few prepared questions that the candidates have received in advance. We're also going to be asking some of your questions. So if you have a question that you'd like to be considered, please write it down and get it into that box right there. We ask that you please address your questions to all of our candidates tonight, so thank you for that. Now we're going to begin with our first question and opening statements. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer. This is your opening statement. Please tell us about yourself, your qualifications for office, and why you're running. We're going to begin with Brad Clark. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, Canby! My name is Brad Clark, and I am hoping to be your number one draft pick for city council. I am an Oregon native. I was born in a small town called Florence, not too terribly unlike Canby, where way back when I served as the high school ASB president, where we rewrote the school's constitution, was a part of Oregon Boys State, received the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award, Rotary Youth Leadership Award, and ultimately was named the city's Future First Citizen. But that was a long time ago, and I never believed that it would bring me back around full circle to wanting to serve on city council. But I did want to serve, and desperately have always wanted to make the world a better place. And that may sound kind of sappy, but it is the truth. I spent many years as a youth and worship pastor as part of churches, hoping that serving in that way might make some small humble difference. And now that I've been a part of the Canby community for the last 15 years, and for 14 of those have had the privilege of serving as an employee in another small town, where I've seen on a daily basis how a city is actually run from the ground level. I've been a part of boards, worked with multiple city departments, and had the pleasure of serving the community, all with the purpose and calling to make things better. So I'm here today to ask for your vote and for you to tell your fellow Canby community and friends that you are voting for Brad Clark for city council first. I'm here asking you to join me in the pursuit of making the world a better place, starting right here in Canby. To think globally and act locally, to choose to do the right thing even when it isn't the easy thing, to love your neighbor and to be your brother and your sister's keeper. Canby is a unique and special community, and together we can create a place that future generations will be grateful for. I have read books, I've taken meetings, and I've worked for many years as a city government employee. Let me put that knowledge and that experience to work for you and for all of us. When your ballot arrives, vote for Brad Clark for city council first, and tell a friend. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Brad. Jim Davis, you'll be up next where your time is ready.
Okay, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Frank Cuttsforth for the use of this room, and also my family, friends, and those that have encouraged me and supported me in this position. I've lived in Canby for 26 years with my wife, Michelle. We have been blessed with five children, eight grandchildren. I am your fire chief and have been since 2015, a chief officer for over 39 years and 48 years in fire and EMS. A few activities in Canby that I've been involved with. I've served on the Park and Recreation Committee as co-chair, served at the Adult Center for two terms on the board, a youth baseball coach for a number of years, a volunteer firefighter with Canby Fire District from 2002 to 2014, Canby Chamber Board Member where I'm currently President of the Canby Chamber, Canby Rotary Club, and I'm President of the Clackamas County Fire Defense Board, in which we've managed through about now four major disasters in Clackamas County. Why am I running for council? This is a great small town, with a culture of caring for one another while maintaining our family-oriented community. I would do my best to collaborate with my fellow counselors to achieve the following. I want to work on sunsetting the URA as soon as possible, reallocate the refinancing to pay off the urban renewal as soon as possible, improve our communications and transparency to our citizens of Canby, budget for communications per person, post agendas and minutes in a timely manner, obtain a long-term lease from the school district for the property at 13th and Ivy so that the Adult Center can move forward with their remodel. Once we agree upon strategic goals at the beginning of the year, ask the city administrator to give us quarterly updates on those goals. Revisit the park and maintenance fee, and recommend to keep that as a five-year renewable to the citizens. Making it permanent, to me, makes it a permanent tax. Support the remodel of the swim center, the Adult Center, and plan for a community center for Canby. And most of all, let's prioritize the items in the park maintenance plan as well as the park and recreation recommendations. Work with the Chamber and the Economic Department in Canby to secure a hotel in town so that we can maintain people in town for our businesses downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Great job. We'll move on to Craig Llewellyn. Your time is ready.
All right, I too want to thank everybody involved in putting this together. My family moved to Canby in 1966, and I grew up through the Canby school system. I graduated from Canby High School in 1983. I went to work for Canby Telephone and helped put me through college. One of my most memorable tasks at the phone company was bringing cable TV to Canby. I helped put up the tower in the dish that sat behind 7-Eleven. We also helped promote cable television in the Clackamas County Fair that year. We had 50 channels, there's one TV for every channel, and that's how we started signing people up. I graduated from the University of Oregon with a degree in economics. From there, I went to the Fred Meyer Management Training Program, and it was the largest employer in the state of Oregon at that time. From there, I went to the Corporate Internal Audit Division. I reported indirectly to the CFO and to the Audit Committee of the Board of Directors. We worked closely with Deloitte, the big aid accounting firm at the time that audited the financial records of Fred Meyer, and we had to do that before putting out the annual report. I worked closely with the Accounting Department, creating, maintaining, and reviewing the budgets each year. Over my working years, I've always been a fiduciary, putting the interests of others first, and have always worked with a high standard of ethics. The last 29 years, I have run a successful firm by helping individuals and small businesses with tax reviews and planning, creating and maintaining budgets, and help make them more profitable while obtaining a financially healthy retirement. And for the last 27 years, I have also tossed financial classes in the community college system in Oregon and Washington. Back in 1999, I was selected to represent the property owners in the city's industrial park to work closely with the then-city council and staff. At the time, there was a lot of resistance to having any kind of growth come to Canby. This is where I learned that growth doesn't come from business, it comes from people, and we can't stop people from moving to Canby. The council and staff brought the entire community together, including the property owners and the industrial park, to create the Urban Renewal District. This was the financial mechanism that would help put in the industrial park infrastructure and look at the town's other needs and desires, including bringing downtown Canby back to life. I have a lot of passion for this town and want to see a good balance between residential, industrial, commercial, and making an awesome place for kids to grow up with good-paying jobs. I have belonged to Rotary International for over 23 years, have been president four times in two clubs, have been involved in the Junior Achievement Boys and Girls Club, Meals on Wheels, door-to-door, and this is the 13th year we are doing a Toys for Tots drive, and we have consistently raised over 600 to 700 toys each year. I'm running for council, I have lived here most of my life and love this town. My daughter and her husband grew up in this town and went to the school system and graduated from Canby High School. My daughter was a Canby Chamber Ambassador while she worked for Columbia Bank here in Canby. My grandson, my new grandson, will also grow up in this town, and he will hopefully too graduate from high school. I have a lot of training and experience in leadership and believe I can add value to this city council.
Good job. Thank you, Craig. We will move on to Herman Maldonado.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and supporting all of us up here. A little bit about me. I'm a 40-year-old father of five, five boys, my wife's completely outnumbered. I recently moved to Canby in 2019. My wife's been a longtime resident of Canby. Since living here, I've realized my heart's never felt more like home. I come from a small town in Kentucky, no bigger than this, but I watched the growth. I watched the growth impact my small town, and it lost that small-town feel. It lost the community. It lost the love for one another. I got the chance recently to serve on the Budget Committee. I saw a lot of things I didn't like, so when the opportunity came that I can run for city council, I took it. I want to make a change for our youth, I want to make a change for our business district, I want to make a change for everyone to be able to have the confidence to come back into the city chambers. We can't do our jobs unless we have you in there, unless we hear your opinions, unless we hear your voices. I haven't seen any of that, and if I get elected, I want to be able to push that more and more. For us to do a job and to do a job correctly, we need your help. That's why I'm running.
Great job. Thank you, Herman. Remind our candidates to keep those mics as close as you're comfortable with them so folks can hear. We definitely want to hear all of your words. We'll move on to Art Murray.
Well, thank you. My name is Art Murray. I have lived in Canby city limits for 23 years, and I've lived in the general Canby area for 55, so longtime resident, longtime supporter. When I introduced my wife Angelica, who's in the back there watching, to Canby in 1990, she immediately fell in love with the community. So we came home from a trip here, visiting my family, and we went back to Kirkland, Washington, and put our house on the market. We decided that Canby was the place we wanted to live. I grew up on a farm in between Canby and Mulalla, as young people often do. I made the decision that I wanted to explore the world a little bit. I left for about nine years, and all the time I knew this was the place that I wanted to call home, and I wanted to come back. I have five children. All of them are graduates of the Canby school system. None of them ever went anywhere else until I went to college. Public service started for me when my son, who's now 34, was in Cub Scouts. I was the Cub Master of PAC 503 for a number of years. And then I graduated to the Trost PTA. I was president there, and then the president of the Canby Booster Club when the kids got into high school. So I've had a lot of service to the Canby schools especially and to youth in the Canby My first venture into any kind of political activity was as chairman of the campaign to pass a bond to build Baker Prairie Middle School. I was extremely happy when we were successful in that venture, and now we've got an excellent, well-functioning school, and it replaced a place that was kind of a relic and grossly too small at the time. It's been my pleasure to serve on the Canby City Council since my appointment in April. Under the leadership of Mayor Hodson and the current city council, there have been great strides made in Canby. I especially point to the downtown business core. When we moved here in 1990, it was not that great a place, and now you look around and it's vibrant, and it's getting more so all the time.
That's your time. Great job, Art. Thank you. Move on to Greg Parker. Your time is ready.
Well, hi. Isn't it great that we're all able to be here in person finally? Two years ago, it was in a TV studio, so... Let me answer the question of why I'm running. It's because of a passion. I love Canby. We picked Canby as a place to raise our kids. I had a funny little story. When I was growing up, one of the things I liked doing was walking to 7-Eleven with a dollar and buying a slushie. And I told my wife, I said, "I want to have a town where the kids can walk to 7-Eleven", and we found one. We also found Ivy Street, which was inadequate, and that was the reason I originally ran for city council, was because I wanted to have sidewalks on it. Maybe I'm not very good at this job, because it's taken us 12 years, but finally this fall, we're doing. My background began as a broadcast journalist specializing in land use, in politics, and in government, finishing that up 15 years later as senior political reporter for Oregon Public Broadcasting. After years of looking on the outside in at government, I decided to give it a try, to see if I could do something to make government more efficient, more effective, and more accountable. I took a job at the Oregon Audits Division as Director of Administration. During my time there, we began performance audits, which went beyond the normal financial statements, but actually how to make government more efficient and communicate and be more responsive to the people that it serves. Since then, that audits division performance unit has saved tens of millions of dollars for taxpayers. Upon retirement, I still had a passion to serve, so I began at Trost Elementary in the dual-language program. One of the things that we insisted on our kids when we moved here to Canby was that we would all take Spanish, given that 25% of our neighbors spoke Spanish, and we thought it was important to be able to speak with them. So I began in a dual-language program. I didn't know the Spanish words for mathematics, but eventually those came about. Since then, I was offered a job working with children with autism in the classroom, and that's something that I do until today. My friends tell me if I have one superpower, it is that I am patient. If it takes 45 minutes to get through a paragraph with a student, I'm fine with that. But again, why am I doing this? I love it. I love walking downtown, talking to the businesses, asking what they need, and trying to solve problems, and I'd be honored if you'd consider me for another term as your city counselor.
Thank you, Greg. Great job. Last but not least, we'll go to Sean Varwig.
It's hard to follow all of that, but hi there. My name's Sean Varwig, and I have had the honor of serving as one of your city councilors for the last four years, and I hope to earn your vote for reelection. When I think of Canby, the first word that comes to mind is home. In 2012, my wife and I began looking for a place where we would raise our family. We were ready to settle down and plant roots. We had a two-year-old daughter at the time, and another one on the way, and we dreamed of a small community where our kids could play outside, walk to and from school without worry, and where people knew you when you shopped at the grocery store, although I will say that my wife doesn't love that nearly as much now that I'm on council as we did when we first moved here. But that's what Canby is. It is a special place, and I believe it's a job of our city council to keep it that way. We're making decisions now that will affect Canby for 20 or more years from now. Here's when my children and your children or grandchildren will be looking for a place to raise their families. I want to ensure that Canby remains a place where they can do that. Besides being madly in love with my wife and kids, I also love Jesus. I'm an owner of two small businesses and a die-hard Seahawks fan. Go Hawks! I volunteer as a swim official and proud to represent the Canby Gators Swim Club at their swim meets. We have two dogs, Hank and Dixie, boxers and boxer mix. We love to get away at our camping property or at the beach. I've spent the last four years serving you on the city council. Prior to that, I spent some time on the Planning Commission. I've been on several boards of directors and several committees, but most of all, I love Canby. I'm in love with this community, and I love serving as one of your city councilors. It's truly been an honor, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to serve you.
Awesome. Fantastic job, candidates. Thank you so much for that. I'm going to move into our hardball questions here. The second question is, you're each going to have two minutes to answer this one, and that question is, what do you believe is the biggest challenge currently facing our community, and how would you seek to address it if elected or reelected? And this time, we're going to start with Jim Davis.
Thank you, Tyler. As everybody knows, Canby is experiencing some significant growth, but we need to maintain the culture of Canby so that it remains as it is today. Inflation, stagflation, whatever you want to call it, we are in a recession, and inflation, the inflation is going up. An article written in the Wall Street Journal by Mr. Rabani, inflation is going to last for a long time this time. They're saying it's going to be a hard landing. It's going to be one of the worst ones since 1970. That's not doom and gloom, we just have to manage through it. Cost of everything, as you know, is going up. Labor costs are up. Extremely hard to find workforce. The winter, natural gas is going to be very expensive this year. Cost increases on purse, social security, it goes on and on, and every day, people are trying to figure out how to make it from paycheck to paycheck. The reason I bring this up is that we need to be wise on how we spend our money. I question why we are doing some of the projects that we're currently doing, like building a dog park at $700,000, or decorating a bridge of Highway 99, well over $2 million, with engineering costs exceeding $300,000. I agree, we need to do something with that bridge, but I don't think we need to spend that much money. Now is not the time to be spending money on additional projects. As you know, traffic is a problem out of the industrial area, and the city is moving forward with the Walnut Bypass. That's to be completed sometime in 2024, so good job with that. Collaborating with other junior taxing districts is going to be important, collaborating with the fire district, the school district, Canby Utility, and the county to partner on current future needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, great job. We'll go on to Craig. Same question.
So I think some of the biggest challenges that I see, first of all, is communication. The council should be a liaison in bringing major groups in the town together. These include the Chamber with large and small businesses, all taxing bodies, general citizens, leaders of neighborhood associations, and the Fair Board. Another area I think is lacking is the lack of project priorities. Looking at the last survey the town had, biking and walking paths was the number-one priority, yet the city put up an arch as now discussing the dog park. I think infrastructure is a real problem. New roads, fixing current roads, we can coordinate this, a lot of this, with new bike and walking paths. We need smarter residential-industrial development. We need better planning with residential developments so we can keep our Canby way of life. In the industrial, working with the property owners in the city quite a few years ago in the mid-2000s, we put an overlay zone on that that required 12 employees per acre. The property behind Fred Meyer that was industrial on rail, that overlay zone was thrown out, and apartments went back there. Those apartments go against everything that industrial park was trying to do. It's trying to offset the tax base from residential. That should have never been allowed to happen, and you just made the problem worse. The potential growth of homelessness, I think, is going to be a big problem. Senate Bill 3115, that was just passed back in June by the Oregon Senate, mandate cities to codify ordinances that protect people from fines and fees for camping on public lands if the local government isn't providing any other viable alternatives. The cities will have two years to address this. We need to get together as a council and go to the county and the state. We need to fight this bill. This is a horrible bill. We'll see a growth in the homeless community in places like Mulalla River Steak Park and Knights Bridge. I think it could be a real problem.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate that. Okay. When you're ready, Herman, we'll go to you.
Well, one of the biggest things that I feel needs to be addressed, as I stated earlier in my introduction, is the fact that we have no direction from the community. We need to get the community back in the chambers, without fear of mockery, without fear of saying what's on your mind. We have so many things going on within the community that need your attention to detail. We're your liaison. That's it. We want to hear what you want and what you need. Whenever you propose things such as the dog park, for instance, I feel like Canby needs a say in that, not just the council. I feel like that process should be slowed down so we can listen to our community more. And whenever we do that, then everything else is going to fall into place. It's a domino effect. You tell us, we do your bidding. Bottom line.
Great. Great job. Thank you, Herman. We'll go on to Art Murray when you're ready.
Well, I feel the biggest challenge we're facing our community is managing growth. It's here, and it's not going to stop anytime soon. Specifically, where, when, and how much growth to allow. We need to consider our current infrastructure and how much the cost of providing those services for additional homes is going to cost. Talking about new streets, utilities, police, fire, parks, education services. It's really important that we don't outgrow our ability to provide needed services to maintain the quality of life we've come to expect in Canby. However, that doesn't mean that we should put in place policies that stop growth. Communities that don't grow will eventually wither, and their current infrastructure will suffer. We need to grow in a way that's in the best interests of all citizens, and we're elected officials. We need to be able to make that analysis, certainly with input from citizens, but most importantly, we need to do the analysis ourselves, and we need to make hard decisions. You know, some of them are going to be popular, some of them aren't. But I believe in city planning policies that will keep Canby a vibrant and special place to live. I want to encourage growth in the downtown core. We're starting to see a vibrant growth down there, and that's the kind of growth we want to continue. We don't want to have, you know, just uncontrolled rampant growth of housing.
It's your time. Great job. Thank you, Art. Move on to Greg Parker.
Well, let me try and open up a little bit of daylight between the candidates. I don't think you can hit a target if you don't know what it is. I think one of the biggest misconceptions we have in this city is that we have an explosive residential growth. In fact, our growth has In fact, our growth has slowed down. We've gone from 2.7% down to 1.9%. Every day, two people die, one person is born, and 1.5 people move in. That is not a growing city. And the people that are moving in are people past childbearing age. We need to find a way to bring younger families into town. One of the ways, obviously, is by having more youth sports facilities. That is one. But the main limiting factor is the lack of affordable housing. I'll have more to say about this later. But the reason that we are not getting younger people into this town with families is because you need $80,000 in assets in order to buy a half-million-dollar house. And before Jamie Neder jumps up here and grabs my neck, it's not the developer's fault when you start off with a lot that is $200,000. What we need to use is a tool that was given to us by the legislature that I tried to get through 10 years ago and didn't have four votes, called the inclusionary rule, which requires new annexations to come into town and have affordable housing. The second thing that we can do is something really bold. And that is for us to partner in a public-private relationship with a developer where the city uses land it owns to bring in below-market housing for essential workers. These are things that I hope to work on if I'm reelected.
Great job, Greg. Thank you. Move on to Sean Varwig. Your time is ready.
Well, thank you. I think one of the biggest challenges facing us right now is our uncertain future and how we react to it. It was mentioned earlier, inflation is higher than it's been in over 40 years. We're in the early stages of a recession that economists say could last longer than the last one. Over the last several years, we've been diligent in building solid reserves at the city to help us maintain our financial stability through the recession. Some want to spend that money and reduce those reserves to levels that would be unsustainable during their economic downturn. And if reelected, I will continue to oppose reckless spending and vote to maintain solid reserves so that we don't have to lay off city staff or fine police department or police officers. And so that we continue to maintain our already struggling infrastructure.
Great job. Thank you, Sean. We'll swing it all the way back around to Brad Clark.
Yes, I get to go last after all of those great answers. Yeah, whether it's the 205 expansion and traffic becoming increased in our city or housing and the economy, or the fact that some outdoor activities are closed down today because it's been 80 degrees in October and the sky is full of smoke, so kids can't play outside because it's tough to breathe. It would be easy to throw up our hands and say, well, we can't do anything about all of this stuff and it's bigger than us. But there's a lot that we can do locally about all these issues. And unfortunately, a minute 20 is not enough to cover all of them and touch on all of the, like, looking at all of it holistically and how these pieces fit together. But I believe it starts with communication. I think that the citizens need to know the big issues that the city is dealing with. And I think there are channels for that, but I think they're very hard to access. And I know the tools that exist that make it more possible for people to give feedback in constructive ways and participate, therefore easily, in community government. And those feedback channels, I mean, I believe the council's already approved a new communications and citizen involvement coordinator so that as we run into all of these issues, we're able to better discuss them and get all of those facts out there. So it doesn't, you know, come 10 years down the road of looking and talking about dog parks and then there's suddenly this clash and there's this misunderstanding about what has happened and what hasn't happened. That kind of feedback and surveys and citizens, I mean, as a citizen, I'll say, I've lived here 15 years and a survey has never come to me. I'm not saying that the city has not done them. But I have not been approached to do one. And that kind of feedback is the most important thing to solve all of these issues together.
Thank you, Brad. We're going to move on to our next question. Candidates, what are your thoughts on how to handle the residential, commercial, and industrial growth? We've been talking about growth already tonight. The residential, commercial, and industrial growth the community is experiencing while maintaining the culture and the special thing that make, the unique thing, excuse me, that make Canby special? We're going to start this time with Craig Lelling. You have two minutes.
Yeah, I think we need to create an urban renewal advisory committee and bring this town together. Let's include general citizens, the taxing bodies of the town, large and small businesses with the chamber and the fair board. Let's understand better as a community what urban renewal is. We need to expand the urban renewal district. We don't want to miss out on any more dollars in the industrial park that we already have with Columbia Distributing, Caruso, Stanton, and American Steel. We need to look at what makes Canby unique and create new ideas and fresh vision of the town, which will provide better control of how the town grows. An example here is let's explore connecting downtown to the industrial park through the fairgrounds. There's real opportunity to make downtown thrive like it never has before. We need to explore this. Work together as a community and come up with projects that are important to everyone and prioritize them. Be open and transparent with the community. This will get more citizens involved. We need to listen to all parts of the community and make decisions that are good for it as a whole, not one person, developer, or small groups pet project. We need decisions that are good for everyone and we need them to make financial sense. Ask the tough questions. Why do we need this project or that project? Does it, have we looked at all the aspects of a problem or project? Have we looked at the alternatives? Is it financially sound? The power of urban renewal is the ability to leverage dollars for county, state, and sometimes federal, depending on the project. We want a balance of live, work, and play.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Great job. We will move on to Herman Maldonado when you're ready.
Well, first off, I'd like to continue working with the planning commission and the planning department and really reviewing and updating the codes that would have Canby reflect the way that we want it to, to have it look and feel the way that we want it to. I don't believe that, I can speak for everyone, but I know I can speak for myself when I say, I don't want my tax dollars going to a URA. What I would like to see is for us to take a conscientious effort in finding other ways and other pathways, or in other monetary pathways to build our downtown businesses and then build an industrial park.
Great job. Thank you, Herman. We'll move on to Art Marine when you're ready.
So there are separate and unique areas of Canby that need to be assessed separately regarding growth. Each area has its own set of challenges and the resolutions can be quite different. So I want to break it down by area. First is downtown. Downtown has come a long way since I've moved here. It was really in need of a facelift. And thanks primarily to the Urban Renewal Agency, it got that. And it looks a lot better than it ever has, but there's still room to improve it. You know, we have businesses along First, Second, and Third avenues that are things like restaurants and galleries and shops and specialty stores. And a lot of those things, we've never really had before or not, and options to shop in those kind of places. So I'm really happy in the direction of downtown and I want to continue that. The next area that, you know, needs to be paid attention to is 99E. I mean, this is a completely different type of growth that you're going to experience on 99E. Different types of businesses are going to be attracted to that area. And there really isn't a lot of space for growth. There's some infill land that can be used. There's some, you know, maybe some buildings that are there that can be either rehabilitated or torn down and developed. But there can't, you know, there's not a lot of new growth going to happen on 99E. And then the last area, of course, is the industrial park. And I think if you just drive through there, that speaks for itself. It's a tremendous success. It brings business and jobs to Canby.
Great job, Art. That's your time. We will move on to Greg Parker.
A lot of good ideas here. Let me take a swing at this in terms of handling the residential and industrial growth. The state has not given us a lot of tools in terms of residential. We're going to have to actually be clever. Here's one. You know, if we're concerned about the impact of traffic on territorial from a park, how are we going to feel about the impact of 600 houses being built along Holly from territorial out to the river? We have a problem there that we have not even grasped because that road is a county road. The city doesn't even own it. Now, the way things have always worked in the past is that development comes in and then we start working on the roads. That's what we did in the industrial park. Now we're working on Walnut. I want to turn that around. I want us to get ahead of the growth. We can't stop it, but we can try and get ahead of it. Herman doesn't want to pay money into the IRA. I don't want the Urban Renewal Agency. I don't want your taxpayers' money going into subsidizing developments. And right now, it is that the city is subsidizing the cost of permitting, of inspections, examination, and roads. So I want to turn that around. That's going to take a heavy lift. I'm going to need your help in order to get that done.
Thank you, Greg. Move on to Sean Varwig. Your time is ready.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right. There are some good ideas up here. Canby is very special. And like I mentioned earlier, that special feeling is what drew us to town. That's what made us fall in love with Canby. The small-town charm is something that I've not experienced anywhere else. I travel not a ton, but some. And I've never experienced it anywhere else. But I don't think that that special feeling, that Canby charm, I don't think that comes from the size of our community. I think that comes from the heart of the people in it. The culture of Canby is woven into our DNA. It's families like the Cuts Force, the Olivers, who have laid the trails before us on community involvement and how to treat our neighbors. And that's what makes Canby special. If we maintain that and keep our traditions alive and treat people with the respect they deserve, even when we don't agree, Canby will always have that special feeling, no matter how big it gets.
Good job. Thank you, Sean. Swing it back around here. Brad Clark, when you're ready.
The key to all of this, of course, is balance growth. And I just am going to echo what the way that Greg put it, which was get ahead of it. Let's look at what the future looks like in 100 years, not what it looks like right now. I mean, we need to define our terms, what that, when we ask the question, what is our culture and what are the unique things that make Canby special? We may all have different answers for that. And so until we engage with one another as a community and can decide what that future looks like, we're going to flounder a little bit and we're going to clash. So finding those spots where we agree, the places, I mean, because I think we have a lot more in common than we do disagree on. And I think that means like, as residential has begun to slow a bit for the time being, we think an opportunity to prioritize regenerative industries coming in, supporting local businesses, especially those that may be forming B Corps or PBCs. Those are ones that are going to benefit the local community. We have to rethink the housing that's going in. We're talking about building houses like Levittown. Levittown was the beginning of suburban building in 1947. We're building, our building practices are 75 years old. And it is time to reimagine what our community can look like if we're to take a longer-term view than where we are right now and trying to hold on tight to this one spot. We can hold on to, like Sean's saying, we can hold on to the things that make us who we are and at the same time embrace the changes that are coming and do the things that we need to do to meet those in the best way possible.
Great job, Brad. Thank you. And last but not least, go to Jim Davis. Two minutes, sir.
Thank you. The time is perfect right now. The planning commission and our planners are doing a great job in regards to what they have to deal with today. But did you know that the city is in the process of updating our comprehensive plan, which has not been updated since 1984? So now's the time to provide input through the process of the comprehensive plan. Work with the planning commission and the community on where we can build affordable housing. As stated here earlier by some other candidates, affordable housing is going to be important for the future. Commercial growth provides revenue to the city. Yes, it's true that the Urban Renewal District did a good job in the Pioneer Industrial Park, but it's time to end it because it's full. Let's start receiving the revenue back from the Pioneer Industrial Park. But the next question is, where does commercial growth happen next? Because we need commercial growth in order to sustain our city as we move forward. I don't know how many of you understand, but the Urban Renewal District, if it was to end today, the fire district would receive $540,000, very badly needed for six additional firefighters. The city would receive over a million dollars if the Urban Renewal District were to end today because of good use of the Urban Renewal District and what we're receiving out of the Pioneer Industrial Park. Council needs to continue to support the city administrator and the city staff. We have some excellent city staff doing some excellent work, but we need to stay out of their way. We set policy, they do the work. Residential growth, increased demands on emergency services, police, and fire. We need additional police officers. We need additional firefighters. Commercial URA, like I said, in the Pioneer Industrial Park has done a great job. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Jim. We're going to now move on to our fourth and final question before we open it up to the audience. Each candidate will again have two minutes to answer, and we're going to start with Herman Maldonado this time. The question is, what do you believe should be the role of city government and the Canby City Council in supporting the business community? And what efforts would you make or expand on to support local businesses in Canby?
Well, my thoughts on this is, first and foremost, we're representatives. We're representatives of the city and of the people that are in it. The biggest thing that we can do is we need to listen to the business owners. Hear what you need. Hear what you want to have happen so that way you can grow and you can flourish. Biggest thing is, you guys actually, you make Canby what it is. Can't tell you how many times I walk in downtown and it's just something new every time. I don't care how many times I have to walk down there. I always find something new. But is there a growth that can happen? Absolutely. I want to hear that from the people of Canby so that way we can facilitate that. We're here to help you build and not dictate. We're not going to put in place any plans or anything that's going to hinder you. Let us know how we can help you and we will do that.
Great job. Thank you, Herman. Move on to Art Marine when you're ready.
So I've heard a lot about the Urban Renewal Agency tonight. Some favorable things, some not so favorable. I've always been a huge fan. It's a great concept. You plug money into an area. It's defined by specific geographic boundaries. And then that money creates additional value in the properties located within it. You use the additional property taxes that are raised as a result of the increased values in the properties and you pay off the debt that you used to finance the district to begin with. So the citizens of Canby don't pay any extra taxes as a result of the URA. The citizens certainly benefit, however. You get a more vibrant business community. The businesses that have come in have been fantastic. They've added jobs. They've, you know, created revenue that has been spent at Canby merchants. There are lots of reasons why this has been a great thing for the city. And it's going to pay off. The bond that we use to finance that agency has generated enough revenue that it will pay itself off. And when it's done, that's great. Then we decide what we do next. And we need to do some great planning in terms of what, you know, what the next step is to continue to reinforce business and to increase the kind of business activity that we have in Canby. I really want Canby I really want Canby to become a live here, work here, shop here community.
Thank you, Art. Great job. Greg Parker?
Well, let me be the contrarian again. Here's the problem with crowdsourcing public policy. Council President Hensley and Mayor Hodson both remember that when we were trying to get the original seed of downtown, the First Avenue Developments, the trees, the benches, the planters, that it was wildly unpopular. It was the Chamber of Commerce that came and officially opposed it, saying, "We don't want you to build it." Now, if we had crowdsourced it, that wouldn't have happened. And is there anybody here who doesn't believe that that was the seed of the Canby Renaissance? Everything we love in this city, the Fine Arts Building, was ridiculed when it was proposed as being too hoity-toity for a little farm community. It was only Elsie Cusford who finally pushed that one through. 1973, Maple Park, $60,000 was too expensive. It was debated throughout the city. People said that is a waste of money. And of course, my favorite was the expansion of Highway 99, when it went from three lanes to five lanes. People lost their minds. They said it is a waste of money. It's going to disrupt business. And here's my favorite, it is never going to be at capacity. We're building something that's totally unnecessary. So sometimes you can crowdsource to get ideas to fine-tune, but I'm going to argue there's also a role for leadership, for people to have a vision and to cast it out. And if we were to, if we were to have taken a public opinion poll 14 years ago on the downtown redevelopment that we all enjoy now, it wouldn't have happened. Sometimes leaders have to make unpopular decisions, and I admire all of you for being willing to be put in that position.
Thank you, Greg. Great job. We'll move on to Sean Varwig.
Thank you. Well, I think we have a couple obligations. Businesses need customers in order to survive. I think we have a duty as a city to do whatever we can to make that happen. I want to make sure that we shout out our incredible staff who is doing stuff like that to make it happen. Tyler and Jamie in our Economic Development Department are doing a phenomenal job with events and that type of thing. So it's important to give them some credit there and their dedication to our businesses. But I think we can look at those things that are successful and ask what makes them successful and expand on that. If something's successful, there's a reason why, and so let's increase those things that we're having success. But I think we can also streamline some of our processes that would attract more businesses and make it easier for them to thrive. I think of things like our permitting process, looking at that to see if there's anything that's a barrier to businesses calling Canby home, or applying for a business license. Did you know that you cannot do that digitally? I think making it possible to apply for your business license online might help draw other businesses. But lastly, I think the most important role for all of us is to be a customer. Spend our dollars at our local businesses. Drink your coffee at Gwynn's Coffee House. Shop at Cuts Force. Get your insurance from Ryan Oliver. Be a customer to our local businesses and support your neighbors.
Great job. Thank you, Sean. Back around. Brad Clark, when you're ready.
I would start by saying that I agree with the first to listen to the businesses and what they need, whether that comes through surveys or the other connections that we have. I also, at the same time, I want to bring the two together, agree with Greg. We have to make hard decisions and you can't crowdsource the policy, but we all want to be listened to at the same time. We want to know that our ideas are being heard. And I've lived here long enough to have seen decisions that I agree with and disagree with, and ultimately, it doesn't matter for the unity of our community and what we're doing together. And I saw some amazing things that our council did during the pandemic for the businesses to make things easier, so I want to call those out and say, I mean, and just say, that's what we need to do, respond to those needs as they come. I think one of the best things that we can do, I was turned on recently to a new book that I am beginning to plow through called Palaces for the People that someone recommended in social media, and it's all about creating social infrastructure. And what that is, is just the opportunity for people to be here and for people to enjoy what is here. In addition to the things that we need to survive, like water and streets and that sort of thing, how is it that we're going to thrive as a community? And we know those things. I mean, like you mentioned, there are calls for more bike paths and more walking areas for all kinds of things. And there's no shortage of opportunity to begin to build those things. It's about how we choose to spend the money. I mean, it always comes down to where your treasure's at, right? And where your heart's at. And so, again, working together to find those solutions.
Great job. Thank you, Brad. Move on to Jim Davis.
Thank you. Having been on the Chamber Board for six years, we've heard a lot from our businesses downtown. On a regular basis, we had a strategic planning process and a couple of major initiatives that the Chamber is currently working on is securing a mid-sized hotel. The reason for that is that we have a lot of people visiting Canby at the fairgrounds, all, you know, all kinds of activities that there's no place for them to stay. If we can keep them in Canby, then they're going to spend money in Canby. And that's why it's so important to move forward with the hotel that the Chamber would like to see developed. And another one is athletic fields. We've lost numerous tournaments in town, and when those tournaments leave town, people leave town. Okay? And that's because Canby, the city of Canby, has done nothing to our athletic fields, nor do they own athletic fields. Compliments to our school district, who's doing a wonderful job with upgrading their fields and bringing some tournaments back to Canby. But we need to follow the Park Master Plan and the recommendations from the Park and Rec Committee in regards to moving forward with developing parks within our city. We have some underserved areas in our city that are addressed in the Park Master Plan that have no parks. Okay? Let's concentrate on those areas as well. The city should be collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce in regards to ensure that the COGEO project, soccer fields, athletic fields, and the ability to build not only those but dog parks, river access, currently are happening, but that's happening in a vacuum rather than working together with the Chamber of Commerce. Streamline our permitting process. The Fire District went through the permitting process. Staff is doing, is improving every time we move forward with that, but we can still make some improvements. And lastly, enforcement. We've got to have enforcement.
Great job. Thank you, Jim. And then move on to Craig Luelling, when you're ready.
Okay. I'd like to see the council have a much stronger partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and would like to see the Chamber of Commerce having a great partnership with all businesses all over town. We need to tap into the owners and officers' expertise and experience. We can learn from them and make them more of an integral part of our community. They can help us ensure projects make good financial sense. We should understand that businesses we have here and what they do, we need to support them and their needs and better understand their resources. They are our partners. We need to create an environment where businesses are coming in between the industrial park, downtown, and other areas of the town that will complement each other. The city should play a lead role in making this happen. We need to be welcoming businesses better and making sure they're involved with our whole community. Along with the citizens, we need to be sure they are being heard and are part of the decision-making process. The council should be a liaison for this. With the city council and the Urban Renewal Agency being the same people, we need checks and balances to the decisions being made to avoid any special interest. This is another major reason we need the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. It should be people who are not elected from the community at large. This includes several different groups and individuals, including the business community and other taxing bodies such as the Fire and Police Departments. If this Urban Renewal District is harming any taxing body in Canby, then having these departments included will ensure they are made whole.
Great job, Craig. Thank you. And last but not least, we'll go to Herman Maldonado.
Thought about this for quite a while. I have no misconceptions that we're not going to be the leaders for the community or that we're not going to ask for you guys to give us some input. Leaders need input from everybody around them, right? Can we spend our money more efficiently? Absolutely. I could see so much more that we can do with $900,000. I could see so much more for our youth. I could see so much more for the Adult Center. What I want to do is I want to represent the people around me, my neighborhood, my community, all the businesses, to the best of my absolute ability, whether that be listening to the councilmen around me or to the citizens. Bottom line, I'm not a politician. I'm just a person that wants to help, wants to make a difference with a little bit more common sense.
Okay, great. Thank you, Herman. Okay, at this time, we are going to begin a period of asking some questions that we received from the audience. Thank you guys so much for turning those in. We're going to continue to rotate candidates as we did before, and we're going to get through as many questions as we can. Each candidate is going to have one to two minutes to respond. Some of these we've found are a little more involved, and we thought it would be fair to give everyone a little more time. If you do need more time than that, we do remind you that you're going to have your closing statement coming up for three minutes, and you can reserve some time there to address anything you didn't have time to get to. Unfortunately, we'll not have time tonight to ask every question that we receive, so we've been selecting the ones that we feel offer the greatest variety of topics and issues to discuss. If you do have a question for a specific candidate or on a specific topic that we were not able to address here tonight, I do encourage you to reach out to our candidates through their Facebook pages or websites or email addresses, and I'm sure they'd love to have the opportunity to answer your questions and engage with you. First one here. I'm going to start with Art on this one. What does it mean to be nonpartisan as it relates to your position, should you be the successful applicant?
About one or two minutes.
We'll do one minute for this one. Thanks, Ray.
Well, clearly, being nonpartisan simply means that there are no associated parties that are supporting the candidates. I don't think that's necessarily the case. I know that some candidates are getting support from political parties and at least the operatives within them. However, I really hope when we get to city council chambers and we start to deliberate the issues at hand, that that's not done through a partisan lens. It needs to be done independently. And it needs, it needs to really, we need to figure out a way to tie together the different ideologies that the council has. That's what I've always tried to do. I really see myself as the candidate that straddles the middle on these issues and tries to knit the two sides together.
Okay, great. Thanks, Art. We'll get a minute back on for Greg, when you're ready. Oh. Hang on, Greg.
Are we doing one or two minutes? I'm, I got.
This is one minute. There it is.
All right. Well, I don't think there's a way of taking politics out of public policy, but what I do think is that we can approach our jobs with the idea of working towards the common good. Mayor Hodson and I don't always agree on everything, but the most significant thing that's really happened in this city was the two of us working together to try and solve the problem of what to do with county roads in the city. For a generation, there was a stalemate, and the mayor and I worked together on a way to bring those roads into the city and bring them up to city standards. Council President Hensley and I took a look at the ordinances, found out that there was a prohibition against us having things like an Oktoberfest in Wait Park. And so we wrote, we co-sponsored a bill in the city council that allowed that, and what do you know, this summer, we had one of those. And Sean Varwig was essential in getting the power undergrounded on Ivy, working with me to convince Canby Utility that this was something that needed to be done.
Thank you, Greg. Sean, when you're ready.
So, yeah, being nonpartisan to me means that we do our job. We come to city council meeting and we make our decisions based on what makes the most sense for all citizens of Canby. As your city councillor, I represent you whether we agree politically or not, and it's my job to make sure that I'm making decisions that prove that. Being nonpartisan means not coming up with preconceived decisions against other councillors' wills. It means doing the business on the dais. It means, it means making good decisions for all of Canby.
Great job. Thank you, Sean. Come back down here to Brad, when you're ready.
Great question. Thank you for whoever submitted it, because I love talking about the elephant in the room and going right for it, because there's been a lot of partisan politics in our city, and this really isn't the place for that. We don't have the time and energy to bother fighting those things, so I just will come right out and tell you where I stand politically. Long ago, I was a part of the Republican Party, but I decided to become nonpartisan many, many years ago because I was, it did not fully encompass all of what I believed, and no other party did. And all of the parties and all of the, that have existed that I have read about have encompassed some piece of my values. So I am multi-partisan. I take the best from everywhere. It's a salad bar. So what it means is being open-minded. Come to the table with no preconceived notions. Don't decide ahead of time. Let's talk about what's best.
Great job. Thank you, Brad. Jim Davis, when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. It belongs at the front door when you walk into City Hall every time. Your partisanship, that's where you leave it, and you listen to the citizens. You do what's best for the most people in Canby with the information that you receive. You receive input from the citizens in those decisions. Encourage involvement by the citizens at the city council meetings so that you can make decisions. Tonight, I've heard some really good ideas from Craig, you know, in regards to some solutions. Okay? That's exactly what we need to do as city councillors, is being able to listen to one another, collaborate, and do what's best for the citizens.
Great job, Jim. Thank you. Craig Luelling, excuse me, when you're ready.
You know, it's interesting, I've had a lot of comments in the last, or a lot of discussions in the last couple of years of many of my clients on this issue. You know, the two-party system is just killing this country. At the end of the, they've had a lot of studies on this. It's amazing how much we think alike, but our parties have just pulled us apart. I don't think parties have any business being in our local government here. I don't think we need to be with a party to have common frickin' sense. I just don't think it's required. We need to get rid of it. And I don't think bringing a group together and getting the ideas, nobody has a bad idea. Nobody should be laughed at. They should all be explored. And we need to come together with good ideas, with priorities, and make this town great. That's how it was built, and I think that's how we need to continue to move forward.
Great job, Craig. Thank you. And Herman Maldonado.
You know, I would have to agree with everybody up here. I don't think every, I don't think a single person up here disagreed with one another. Politics don't belong in the chambers. Common sense. That's exactly what belongs there. Doing what's right, that's what belongs there. You know, you can sit here and talk to anybody on the street, and you may not agree with everything they say, but you're going to find one or two things you're going to agree with. You talk to people, you come to an understanding, and that's where you lay it, right there in the middle.
Okay, great. Thank you, Herman. Okay, this one has quite a bit of background. Before we get to the question, I'm going to go ahead and read the whole thing, cognizant of the fact that we don't have the question on the board anymore. So if, when it comes to your time, if you need it rephrased or restated, please let me know, and that won't cut into your time. Here we go. Sorry, I promised you wouldn't have to hear from me, but this was an audience question. The Canby Adult Center offers essential services to Canby's older adult citizens, ages 55 to 105, including meals, transportation, recreation, and fitness. CAC rents a building from the city of Canby. While we have always enjoyed an excellent relationship with the city, this came from the Canby Adult Center, by the way, if that wasn't obvious. While we have always enjoyed an excellent relationship with the city, the building is tired and requires both maintenance- tired and requires both maintenance and upgrades if we are to adequately meet the needs of today's older adult community. CAC stands ready to partner with the city on building renovations, but the current year-to-year land lease with the school district makes it impossible to consider serious investments into the building. As a city councillor, what action will you take to guarantee that Cambie's older adult community has access to a safe, welcoming and updated facility now and in the future, including a long-term lease?" We're going to give you two minutes for this one. We're going to start with Greg Parker when you're ready.
Well, it's interesting that today's generation of lawmakers are given circumstances that if you were to start from scratch, no reasonable person would come up with. Who would build a million-dollar swim center on property you don't own? Who would build an adult center on property you don't own? These were decisions made a half-century ago and it's what we have today. I think we need to expand our swim facilities, but the footprint that is there, I don't think is adequate. I believe in owning the property underneath you. It doesn't appear like that's going to be possible. So I'm willing to compromise and go with a 10-year lease and because I believe the city council can walk and chew gum at the same time, I think at the same time, we need to start looking to purchase property that would allow us to have a multipurpose facility, a YMCA-type of facility that not only included fields for youth sports, but also had room for the adult center. Our demographics are heading in that direction. They're going to have more customers every day. And I am willing to cast my vote for admittedly, what I think is not the best thing, which is a 10-year lease, but you have my commitment on that.
Okay, thank you Greg. Great job. Go to Sean Varwig. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, so many people might not understand or realize, you know, kind of the situation that we have with our adult center and our swimming pool. So the ground is owned by the school district. The buildings are owned by the city. The adult center is their own organization renting the building that we rent the ground from. So it's definitely confusing. We had an opportunity to enter into a long-term lease this last summer. Unfortunately, it didn't pass votes at our city council level. I am a huge fan of signing the lease because we do, we need to upgrade the facilities. Recently, the swimming pool had a water pipe burst. It's going to continue happening. The pool will not be able to last more than a few more years if we don't do some upgrades to it. But as Greg mentioned, why would we spend money on a building that's on land that we don't own? I've heard it said, "The youth are our future," but I also think that our seniors are our present. And they go hand in hand. And so we definitely need to make sure that we get a long-term lease so that we can invest in some upgrades to these buildings so that they continue to operate while we look for what we have in the future. So I definitely support a long-term lease.
Thank you Sean. Great job. Brad Clark, you'll have two minutes when you're ready.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been said, you do the best that you can right now. I mean, I think that is the best decision that one can make is what, not what works in the moment, but you have to move forward one way or another. We need to invest in this kind of social infrastructure, period. The question comes in with where it lands in the priority because, man, if tonight has taught us nothing else, is the list of demands that are placed on the city government for the things we need to look at and where you put your energy, where you put your time and where you put your money. And so in order to get the best, right thing done down the road, to buy that land or to buy land to have something like this, to continue to provide those kinds of social services, which are deeply important and especially as we begin to face more and more crisis, it's proven over and over that those kinds of social gathering points, those kinds of places in the community, like community centers and libraries and sports centers, I mean, those types of places are what in a crisis, bonds keeps the bond of the community so that we are supporting one another. Investments need to be made there. I mean, and it's a tricky decision. So, you know, coming into it with very little knowledge ahead of time, you do the best you can, which is we've got to maintain what we can for now, if we can shift some big thing in the budget, because none of us want, no one wants to increase taxes in any other way to do that. And so, you know, if we can avoid it, so we just do what we can and it sounds like that is the best decision to ensure that it continues on now, invest in it having a better, brighter future.
Thank you Brad. Great job. Getting in the sense that our candidates like the two-minute timer, a little bit more than the one-minute, 60 seconds of stuff. Jim Davis, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I served on the Cambie Adult Center Board for two terms, term limited out. And I have a passion for the people and what's going on at the Cambie Adult Center. They're doing a wonderful job. Kathy Robinson is doing a tremendous job. We go up every Monday and serve lunch at the adult center. They're busting at the seams, I mean, big time. They need to expand. They have plans ready to go to expand. The city council and the school district, thank you, school district, for working out a long-term lease, which was voted down by our city council at the second reading. I don't know why that was voted down, but it's delaying the project at the adult center and moving forward with that. The other option that I've always had a passion for is a community center. In our Park Master Plan, we have that listed as a community center. Could you see the vision of us building a community center using the Ackerman complex when the school district no longer needs it? We don't need to do it right away. But turning that portion into the adult center, turning the adult center building into a teen center for our youth and keeping teens off the street and building a new swim center on that property. But to do that, we need to have a long-term lease on that property. The city has given long-term leases. The fire department is sitting on a 20-year long-term lease on the new fire station on the north side. So that's very possible. So I do not understand why that lease, the long-term lease, was not approved. That had to be embarrassing for the city administrator who was told to go and get that long-term lease and have the rug pulled out from underneath him when that wasn't approved. Thank you.
Thank you Jim. Great job. Craig Luellin, you'll have two minutes.
Well, I'm going to be the broken record in the room here. But again, that's why we need an urban renewal advisory committee. These are the things that should be identified and prioritized. And having a committee like that, understanding this issue, can push the education out to the community. The adult center's been a great thing for Cambie. They shouldn't have to wait through all this red tape. This is ridiculous. The Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, they can look all these projects, where's the pool, a park, whatever it is, and prioritize it and move it forward quickly if it has common sense. If the adult center needs a lease, and they need it yesterday, why are we still debating this? This is stuff that the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee can be looking at at a higher level and if it makes sense, can move it forward quicker. They can educate the community and push it forward with the council. And this is true on any project. When we first put that urban renewal plan together, the city hired the consultants to help us. He said, "Dream big." We need to get back to that. Dream big and prioritize. And by the way, urban renewal is the financial mechanism that can do this. That's one of its whole major goals. This is what should be in there. We need to expand this. But we need to make common sense, common sense decisions and not have any special interest pushing it. It needs to be, these decisions need to be good for the whole of the community, not for one person or a developer.
Great. Thank you Craig. Great job. Herman Maldonado, you'll have two minutes.
Well, I think the majority of it's been pretty unanimous. A 10-year lease is in the best interest. However, what are you going to do in that 10 years? At that point, we need to make decisions, conscious decisions on what is next. 10 years goes by real quick. We need to make more decisions on, all right, are we going to keep this? Are we going to move forward with a different complex? Build something more of a youth facility. Teens can come around, come after school, get tutoring, learn a trade even. It can also tie into the adult center. My kid loves going out and hanging out with his grandfather. My grandfather, or my father loves going out and hanging out with the people of his age. Can we intertwine those two? Absolutely. There's a lot that our kids can learn from the seniors of our community. There's a lot I'm still learning. If we're going to sign a 10-year lease, which I think we should do, then we need to start thinking about the next footstep in the sand.
Great job. Thank you Herman. Audrey's going to bring you guys some more water if you need any.
Thank you Audrey.
Okay. Art, last but not least, two minutes.
Well, as I listened to Councillor Parker and Councillor Varwig, I found that I couldn't disagree with a single thing they said. We're in complete agreement. I actually feel a little bit guilty about this issue because I have missed one city council meeting since I was appointed. And that was the one where we voted on the lease, the 10-year lease for the property that has the swimming pool and the adult center. I would have voted yes to accept the lease. I really thought we needed to take care of that at the time. But I didn't get to vote, so, you know, now we are where we are. I also like Mr. Luellin's idea of funding a more robust facility with URA money. I think that makes a lot of sense. So, you know, this is a problem that we can't run away from. I'm confident we will come to terms with the school district on renewing that lease for 10 years. And I would never support building another facility on leased land. I only would support building it on land the city owns. Because you're going to find yourself in this situation again, you know, and whether it's 30 years down the road or 100 years down the road, it's a mistake to do that. We should own the land where we make major investments.
Great job. Thank you Art. We received a number of questions on a topic that has already been mentioned by a few of the candidates tonight, the proposed dog park on Northeast Territorial Road. We felt we'd be remiss not to give our candidates a chance to speak to that issue, something that's clearly important to a number of folks here. So here's a question. "The Cambie City Council is considering the construction of a new dog park on Northeast Territorial Road, a project that has drawn criticism from Cambie residents over concerns about its location and cost, among other things. How would you approach this project if elected or re-elected?" You each have 20 minutes. I'm kidding. Two minutes and we'll start with Sean Varwig.
So how do you know that you're placing a dog park in the appropriate spot and spending the right amount of money if you only look at one spot and one budget? You can't. I think the idea of a dog park is fantastic. I think we need to look at multiple locations and vet locations. I think deciding to put something somewhere just because once upon a time there was a plan to put something there is reckless spending. If we don't look at other locations and vet them out to see if maybe they're less expensive, maybe they're better for our community, how do we know that we're doing the right thing? And the nonpartisan question was asked earlier, like, we have to make the decision that is the best for the entire community. So why aren't we doing that with the dog park? I oppose the location only because we haven't looked at other locations. I don't oppose the dog park. I just want to make sure that if we're spending money, that we're spending it wisely. And so I want to look at other locations. And so when there's not an opportunity to vet other spaces, other locations, we're not spending our money wisely. Do you go to the car dealership and say, "Give me your most expensive car"? Maybe, but that's not the best use of your money. You look and try and find the best deal. I think that we owe it to our citizens, we owe it to our community to look at other options. Heck, we might even be able to put two dog parks in the community, one on the north and one on the south for the same amount, but we don't know that until we look at it. I think we should look at other locations and if we wind up back there and that's the best spot, so be it, but let's look at them first.
Thank you Sean. Great job. Swing it back over here to Brad Clark when you're ready.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of the issues that the community has brought up with the dog park are worth revisiting because, you know, the potential $900,000 price tag, it just, it had a lot of bells and whistles. I mean, and I've got, I'll say first, I don't have a dog in the race. Thank you. I don't have a dog. My other intention is to make meetings a little more fun for everyone. But I do think dog parks can be an integral part of thinking holistically for a community. And let's talk ideals. Ideally, we would have multiple dog parks in accessible areas to different parts of the city. And maybe in order to do that, they wouldn't all have dog wash stations or whatever some of the extra little amenities were that looked like, sounded like, may have been a part of them. And, you know, having taken dogs though, as I have cared for other people's dogs to dog parks, I think they're a huge value to the community. I think some water coming in there so dogs can have some water to drink. I mean, there's some basic stuff that you can do, adds enormous value to the community. So I think everybody just wants to know that they've been heard and that the options have kind of been thought through. And if that's a $900,000 dog park, great, let's do it. Cambie can have nice things. We can do nice things for ourselves. It's okay. We put our money in together and that's why the community becomes more livable and wonderful. So, yeah, let's take another look at it and see where that leads us.
Okay, great. Thank you Brad. Go to Jim Davis, two minutes when you're ready, sir.
Thank you for the question. This is near and dear to my heart. I sat on the Park and Recreation Committee as co-chair, the Park and Recreation Committee. They voted seven to one to oppose the current location of the dog park. That was not listened to by the city council. That's our citizen committee who vets this. They spent a lot of time vetting that. That's not fair to our citizens committee, okay? Why have a Park and Recreation Committee if you're not going to listen to them? Number one. Number two is when you look at the cost, they haven't taken in the soft cost. When I ask about the soft cost of time spent by our Public Works Department and everybody else, they can't give you a cost to that. So who knows what the true cost is for that? We had over 300 petitions signed by citizens of Cambie asking them not to build a dog park, but let's vet some other locations. Let's leave that property as a preserve, a nature preserve. I don't know how many of you, I sit at the back of the fire station, I see dogs out there all day long. People love to allow their dogs to run out there. Let's leave it the way it is. People have brought some good ideas as far as having dog parks on both sides of the city. People on the south side have to travel over there to use that dog park? That's not fair, okay? Let's just vet some other locations for that dog park and let's not spend $700 to $1 million on a dog park in one location. Let's keep that property as it currently is.
Thank you Jim. Great job. We'll move on to Craig Luellin, two minutes when you're ready, sir.
What a loaded question.
How many hours do I have?
Well, here's this broken record again. Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. You know, it brings me back 20 years ago. And again, I come back to the power of urban renewal is the leveraging ability you have with that. Right now, from what we heard, wouldn't it make sense that the adult center would be more of a priority than a dog park? Do you know how much money $900,000 could leverage through the county and the state? I'll bet you there's some county help for that adult center. I'll bet you there's some county help for that adult center. This committee can be cool. It brings this town together. I'm going to harp on it. You're going to hear more about it in my closing statement. I can't help it. It prioritizes these things. It gets the community more involved, and better common sense is had.
Thank you, Craig. Great job. Herman Maldonado, you will have two minutes when you're ready, sir.
Oh, boy, oh, boy, where's that 20 minutes now? My job puts me in a lot of positions where I have to budget and give a budget to build out. I do not believe the current proposal for the dog park should be anywhere near $900,000. I think there's a lot of amenities that can obviously be cut. Not that big of a deal. Biggest thing is, is location. As Jim said earlier, it was voted against. So why are we still pushing so hard on a location that was already voted against? We need to look at other locations. Sean's right. We could probably split that in half and build two very decent dog parks instead of having people from one side of town drive all the way over to the other to go walk their dog or to let the dog play. We don't do that for our kids. We have parks everywhere. Kids can walk right down to the end of the street. Yeah, I'm definitely against the dog park's location. Am I against the dog park? Nope. Love it. I've got a dog. He's a little jerk, but I love him. That's all I've got to say about it.
Great. Thank you, Herman. Great job. Move on to Art Marine. You have two minutes, sir, when you are ready.
So, a lot of people have said they know how I feel about this, but I've never publicly, publicly stated it. Not once, even really been asked. But I've given a lot of thought. I choked when I saw the, the price tag, honestly. But then I started to dig into the numbers, and I realized they aren't quite as, as high as they look. I mean, there, there are definitely some components of that that, that can and will be cut. There's a hundred, $120,000 sidewalk that goes along the outside. We don't need that. There's a 15% contingency in the budget for the dog park. There's a good chance we won't need that. We might, but hopefully not. The fact remains, we are sitting right now on 600,000, or $6 million in restricted funds that we can only invest in parks. These are funds that come from system development charges that our development partners have contributed, not always on their own volition, but they, they've been required to contribute. And that's grown to $6 million. And we have exactly one project that's ready to go and build now, or will be very shortly. If we change the location, we're looking at two years before we employ that money. That money won't buy anything, or won't win nearly as much in two years as it does now. It's going way down, and, you know, your dollars are decreasing in value every day. We all know that. So I am, I'm, I'm going to come out officially and say I'm in, in favor of the current location.
Okay, thank you, Art. Great job. We will move on to Greg Parker. You all have two minutes, sir.
All right. Well, let me give you another reason not to vote for me. I, the other night, I was doing some campaigning, going door to door, and you know what? Every house I went to said, I don't want a dog park next to me. I don't want to hear the sound. I don't want the traffic. You know where I was? The Honda Pits. Now, one of the problems with us not having a vibrant newspaper, these people didn't even know that there was discussion going on about this. And when I said, well, no, we have a petition from people who live over in territorial, they said, let them mind their own business, don't send the dog park over here. Again, we get back to this premise of, are we going to crowdsource where we make decisions to put in facilities? Can you imagine how much that soccer field is going to increase traffic to a neighborhood? Do you really want to crowdsource that and, and, and not build things if people oppose it? And this comment about leave it the way it is, sometimes I'm having a hard time getting my head around this. The dog park will cut down three trees. The fire station cut down 20 trees. So if a person truly believes that that area is so pristine and should not be, should not be attacked, then where were these people when 20 trees were taken down for the fire station? Finally, I've had people say, I'm not going to vote for you if you don't change your position.
Guys, let's keep it down in the audience, please.
And I'd like to say, do you really want an elected official who is going to make decisions based upon what is in his best political interest?
Thank you, Greg. Great job. I think we will have time for one more question from the audience for one minute, Ray. All right, we've had some talk tonight about sunsetting or ending the Urban Renewal Agency, but the URA has also been a catalyst for developments improvement, for development improvement as well. What is the best URA project we've done as a city? It's a question to you candidates. You have one minute, and we'll start with Brad.
I, I'll just be honest and say, I am completely open on what seems to be a very fiery debate between ending the URA and leaving it open. I think there are great benefits that it has given to the city, and I think there are, from, from the things I hear, there are also a lot of things that it may be getting in the way of being able to do. So I, I just want to be honest as a person who is running for a political office, that I want to gather a lot more information before I would make a decision on something like that because of the multitude of good projects that have come out of it. But continuing something extra like that in perpetuity, I think there are a lot of good questions to be brought up about, too. So, sorry that in one minute I can't, uh, come to a big final conclusion on that for you.
No, no problem. Great job. Thanks, Brad. I'll just say, I, I think the question, feel free to answer it however you like, of course, but I, I think it wasn't necessarily asking, you know, end it or not end it, but what is, what good has come out of it, I guess. Jim, you'll have a minute.
Thank you. I have a lot of experience in urban renewal districts. While at Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, I dealt with the urban renewal districts with the city of Sherwood and Tuolton. I understand urban renewal, and the urban renewal law continues to change. 2015, the city or the Urban Renewal Agency struck a deal with the fire district to sunset the urban renewal district in 2024, 2025. Rick Robinson asked us to extend that, to put in a traffic light at Fred Myers. We agreed to that. The best use of urban renewal, I feel, and urban renewal is good, as Craig has said, the Pioneer Industrial Park is huge. That's important. Now it's time to end it and start reaping those benefits of those buildings being on that property, okay? And stop doing these selling projects that they're currently using urban renewal money for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Great job. Craig Llewellyn, you'll have a minute. Urban renewal, a topic you haven't talked about at all tonight, so.
I'm a little passionate about this, if you can't tell. You know, it's interesting. In, in 1978, we built a house out there, my family did, on a farm. In 1983, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan passed. They made every one of those houses and farms worthless, and none of us were brought into that decision. That's why I had to get involved with this the way I did. But one thing I understood about urban renewal agencies, it is the coolest thing the state has created, but they have done a horrible job of educating the people. And the problem, the only con to urban renewal is the people making decisions behind it. It gets abused. A case in point, I was just telling Jim, the light rail from downtown Portland to the Expo Center, it was, it was voted down three times and then got put in. Guess how that got in? It's the people behind the decisions of urban renewal is the problem. That's why we need an Urban Renewal Advisory Committee that are non-elected people that puts checks and balances on this thing.
Great job. Thank you, Craig. Move on to Herman Maldonado. You will have one minute, sir.
I'm going to have to agree with Jim on this. The Pioneer Industrial is actually amazing, but it is time to bring it into, to the URA. Use it for a short period of time as needed. Whenever it's, whenever you're done using it, get rid of it. Put the money back where it needs to go. 500,000 in the firefighters, I think it was 1.8 million in the school. Put it back. Why are we taking from them? Those are essentials. We're done. Now let's reap the benefits of the, of the industrial complex.
Great. Thank you, Herman. Move on to Art Marine. One minute, sir.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to argue that the Pioneer Industrial Complex was the, is the crown jewel of the URA. It, it is the best thing that, that that agency has been able to fund, and we should be all, be very proud of it. It's doing great things for us. I don't, I don't see any reason to accelerate the repayment of the bond. We've got very good terms on that debt. We can continue to utilize the excess money within the URA as we, as we choose to until the debt is retired. And then we'll let, let the, the current URA sunset. And if we find a reason to establish a new one, you know, for something like a community center, community sports fields, then we'll just start a new one.
Great. Thank you, Art. Move to Greg Parker. One minute, sir.
Well, there seems to be some confusion about the funding source for some of these projects. It was, it was mentioned as being a silly project of making the logging road bridge not have rust on it. That, that is from Urban Renewal Agency savings. We refinanced our bonds and came up with an additional $6.6 million, totally separate fund. I would, I would also say, in addition to the other things that have been mentioned, I think one of the best things for the Urban Renewal Agency was the $1.2 million given to the Cambie Fire District for them to buy new equipment and remodel their main station.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And last but not least, Sean Varwick. One minute, sir.
Yeah, well, there's no doubt that there's been some incredible things that came as a result of the Urban Renewal District. And I'm in agreement with a lot of these guys that the Cambie Pioneer Industrial Park is, is probably, as Mr. Marine put it, the crown jewel, right? It's, it's because of the Urban Renewal District that we were able to develop that out, and we have the funds that are coming in now. So that's, that's a win right there. But, you know, when we went to the junior taxing districts and asked them for a favor, you know, to extend for an additional year so that we could do some other projects, and they said, cool, and then we go and save $6 million, and instead of going back to them and saying, how can we pay this down sooner and try and get you your money back? We want to spend it. To me, that's, that's just kind of a slap in the face to them who gave us, did us a favor by extending it a year so that we could do a project. And I think that we deserve to get this thing sunsetted, closed down as soon as we possibly can.
Great job. Thank you, Sean. Okay, we are going to now move on to our closing statements, our final, our final question here tonight. Each candidate is going to have three minutes once again, and we're going to begin with Jim Davis per our rotating order. The question is going to be, it's now time for your closing statement. Please use this time to revisit and share further remarks on any topics that have been discussed tonight. We've gone through quite a few, and give your closing argument for why Cambie citizens should vote for you. You have three minutes, Jim.
Thank you. And thank you to the Cambie Chamber, Tyler, for moderating tonight, Audrey, her hard work, as well as Rick Keen as her timekeeper. Thank you very much. And most of all, thank all of you for coming tonight and taking your time, and for those watching this broadcast. After a council meeting in September, I went home to discuss with my wife, Michelle, the possibility of applying for the city council position. Oh, boy. Together, we both agreed that I should run for city council and put my full retirement on hold if elected to serve you. In 2015, I made the decision to, to put my retirement on hold, and I took the fire chief's job at Cambie Fire. Working at Cambie Fire in this, with the citizens in Cambie and building my professional relationships has been the highlight of my 49 years career. We have the most highly qualified firefighters and staff that I've ever worked with. I am not a political person at all, and I'm not going to be a career city counselor. But I promise you, I will give 100% if elected to serve you for the next four years. Yes, I have my political affiliations. With that said, I'll leave my partisan affiliations at the front door of City Hall. I will uphold my oath of office at all times. I will make decisions of what I feel is best for the most people in Cambie. Tonight, we've heard from the candidates running for city council. Seven candidates is a lot for three positions, and thank you all for applying for these positions. That tells me, though, that perhaps the cities want some change if we have seven people applying for three positions. I wouldn't be running if I wasn't concerned for our city future. If you are happy with the current direction of our city council, I'm not your person. If you want trust, leadership, and accountability at all levels, vote for change. Since I have a few minutes left,
Sure.
I would like to make some comments in regards to a comment in the voters pamphlet in regards to how the fire district received the money. We agreed to a 2015 agreement with the Urban Renewal District to sunset the urban renewal. The fire district accepted $1.1 million less than what we were owed in the urban renewal plan so that we could sunset this urban renewal sooner. And the fire station was not done with urban renewal money. That was done with a bond approved by the citizens, not urban renewal money. We bought a fire truck and a medic unit with that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Great job. We'll save our applause to the end, please, guys. Thank you. I understand. Craig, you will have three minutes for your closing statement when you're ready.
You know, one of the things that I learned in the last 30 years of dealing with all this is it amazes me, and it's a statewide problem. One of the issues with town councils, planning commissions, and city staff is there's never requirement for them to learn any history of the planning of the town and the why of the planning over the last 30 or 40 years. In 1989, I learned what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan was, and in 1991, I started learning about urban renewal and its issues. It took me over 100 hours at the library to create a timeline of events in order to understand the growth boundaries and the need for land designated industrial. The industrial area was included along with many other parts of the town. One of its major goals is to improve the city's lighted areas, such as the downtown. The financial power in urban renewal is when you develop land and its zoning goes from EFU to industrial, exclusive farm use to industrial. The urban renewal captures all the taxing revenue, and the entire state helps fund your city. This is not an increase in taxes, it's a diversion of taxes with a new line item on your property tax statement. Prior to 1999, the city's budget was constantly in deficits prior to the urban renewal. You wouldn't have any money today if it wasn't for urban renewal. For every dollar of revenue coming in from residential development, many more are going out in services. With industrial and commercial, it's just the opposite. We need to offset the tax base, or we will continue with deeper deficits. I adjudicated the council, planning commission, staff of what had happened over the years, and most of them thanked me after and said they had no idea. Bringing the town together through a mechanism like an urban renewal advisor committee, we can brainstorm ideas together, from walking trails, sports parks for our kids, to a new recreational facility. It will give us more control of the growth of the city. We need to be proactive before the developers show up on both industrial and residential fronts, which is what's been going on. We should not allow any developer to tell us one thing and do another. With developers, we need to understand latecomer agreements, so they are responsible for the infrastructure needed later from a project such as traffic lights and roads. Man, do I have some stories there for you. We need to review our infrastructure, be methodical in creating new roads, fix current roads, and examine how we can make the downtown core flow better with parking and foot traffic. We need to connect the downtown to the industrial park and make growth flow back this way. With the fairgrounds in the middle, we should explore a hotel and convention center and have good roads with bike and walking trails connecting all of it together. I believe this could create the strongest downtown core we have ever had. As a collective group, we need to prioritize all these projects and move forward together. As a collective group, we need to prioritize all these projects and move forward together. With my knowledge and experience with this town over 30 years, and my professional accomplishments and experiences over the last 40 years, I feel I can bring a wealth of leadership qualities and expertise to this city. It's election time, Canby, and I need your help. I'm an independent thinker. I have no conflicts of interest, and I hold there's no special interest. I don't have a group that I'm running with, and I'm asking for your vote and would be honored to receive it.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate that. All right, Herman, your closing statement. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you all again for showing up and showing us a little support and hearing us all out. This has been a long, drawn-out process. I know everybody's kind of antsy and ready to get home already. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Common sense, common sense on spending, on proposals, anything, that needs to start happening more often. Progress needs to happen, absolutely, but it needs to happen with some common sense. If we can't do it for you instead of ourselves, then we have no business being up here. Vote for me, and I guarantee you I will implement changes internally and also externally.
Thank you, Herman. Appreciate that. Great job. Art Marine, you will have three minutes when you're ready, sir.
So I really want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It takes a lot of effort to get this many people in one room, and I appreciate you all being here. You know, this is a lot of information to absorb. Some of it you're going to agree with, a lot of it you won't. But I thank you for coming, and I'm especially thankful for the candidates that are up here. Brad, Jim, Craig, Herman.
Me, too.
Greg and Sean. You know, all of us want to serve the community. We want to serve Canby. We want to make it the best place it can be. We have different opinions and ideas on how to do that. And in the end, we're going to have to make decisions based on the issues that come in front of us. You know, a friend of mine asked me, "Why do you want this job?" And it's, one thing is definitely not to get rich. It's a volunteer job. We do get a stipend. It's $100 a month. Probably spend, I don't know, maybe 20 hours a week reading the 200 to 300 pages of literature that we have to go through in order to make these decisions. There's a lot of information and a lot of data we have to absorb. I don't do it for fame. Most people, most of you probably don't even know me. And most of the citizens of Canby don't know me. So, or the rest of us, for that matter. And, you know, fame isn't something that's important to me, and I don't think it's important to any of the candidates here. Is it for power? No. Power means nothing to me. I don't want to exert power over the citizens of Canby. What I want to do is do the best job I possibly can. At the League of Oregon Cities Convention that we just attended a couple weeks ago, Senator Wyden gave a keynote address, and he asked that very question, meaning, talking to the delegates at this conference, "Why do you do what you do? Why are you here?" And he was kind enough to answer the question for us. It's because you love the community that you live in. And I love Canby, and I want to serve. So I'm asking for your vote, and I know we're going to end up with an excellent city council regardless of who's elected, but I hope you'll come to the conclusion that I'm the best choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Great job. Yeah, I don't take credit for the crowd here tonight. I know we had enough trouble just getting seven people in the same room with all of your schedules, so. Greg, you will have three minutes for your closing.
Yeah, let me first of all apologize to Jim. I did misspeak that the $1.2 million did go for equipment, not for the station. One of the things that's important for all of us is to be able to take a punch, and I'm okay with most of the time, but I do want to push back on this question of accountability. You live in the most penny-pinching city in the state of Oregon. Most cities have reserves of 15% or less. We have reserves in excess of 30%. Now, I never want to be a tax-and-spend person, but I don't want to be a tax-and-hoard. Right now, we're taking your money and we are sitting on it when there are livability issues that need to be addressed. There are roads that need to be repaired. Yes, it's important to have a rainy day fund. But to geek out on you for a moment, one of the differences we have, an advantage we have in Oregon over our neighbors in Washington, we're not a sales tax state. When you hit a recession and a sales tax, your government revenues stop immediately. We're property taxes. Even in a long recession, by the time property values drop, you're out of the recession. And even during the heat of the last recession, we still had 95% of the people paying their property taxes on time. Here's another reason to respect these people of the guts. The next four years, these people will be making decisions that affect the next 20 years, and they are going to be the toughest in two generations. We are going to redraw the urban growth boundary. We're going to decide which farms become homes. We're going to rewrite the comprehensive plan. We're going to rewrite the development plan. We're going to have to ask the question, do taxpayers subsidize the growth of development? Or are we going to establish a carrying capacity and say, "You know what? We can't handle any more distribution centers where there's a half million traffic a year, and we certainly can't afford to give them tax breaks." $25 million tax break over 15 years, taking away from firemen, from police. I was one of only two city councillors to vote against that. We're going to have some tough decisions. We have some talented, creative people up here with new ideas. New blood and new ideas are great. What I'd ask you to consider is in the nuances of land use planning and development, is there a role at the table for an experienced hand? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Great job. We will go to Sean Varwick. Three minutes, sir, for your closing.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to also thank everybody for putting this on. Thank you to Tyler and to the chamber, to Ray, and all those who have made this possible tonight. I also want to thank my family. There's not a lot of opportunities to do that, and I just think that, you know, our families sacrifice a lot to allow us the opportunity to serve you. And so I just want to make sure that I take a minute of my time to say thank you to my wife, Jessica, and my kids. Chloe's back there, and my daughter Lily is at home, and I just want to make sure that they know how much I appreciate them letting me serve. We love Canby. I'm glad we've had the opportunity tonight to talk about how special this city is. It truly is a remarkable place, and I'm happy to tell people that I live in Canby when they ask. I get lots of comments from people about what a great place it is, how much they love coming to visit, and I'm proud of that. I'm just a normal guy, and I love that I get to serve you as one of your city councillors. I don't have a political agenda that I'm trying to promote. I don't have political aspirations beyond the city level. We're your neighbors. Our kids go to school with your kids. And I like being part of making it Canby a place where our kids and grandkids will want to settle down with their families. If you'll have me, I would love to continue to serve you as one of your city councillors. It truly has been an honor for me. Thanks.
Great job. Thank you, Sean. Lucky Mr. Brad Clark. Be our last closing statement here tonight. You have three minutes when you're ready.
I want to thank first of all of you who are here for being engaged and caring, because I have sat in those seats and watched on, you know, on the screens over the last few years, and it's, it can feel disempowering sometimes when so much is happening and you feel like you have such a small voice. There are definitely things I am excited and passionate about being able to do by being a part of the city council here, by increasing communication and bringing some tools that will help the whole community know what's going on, that aren't just digital, but trying to get back to some kind of city newspaper to invest those things, and some kind of newsletter that we get out to everyone for those who aren't as plugged in. Streamlining participation, there's no shortage of work for this job, and I mean, we call it a job. It's a volunteer position. It's, you know, a $100 stipend is a little ridiculous, it seems, for all of the time and energy that goes in with, as long as you guys know it just is in being here this evening. And so streamlining participation in different committees and city council and that sort of things so that other voices can come in and be heard, and empowering the city staff to do the things, to set them free. Being a part of a city staff for such a long time, I know what it's like to be supported. I know what it's like to be trusted, and I know how many amazingly good things can happen when we do that. And so as the council, you get to set the vision for the city, and then you get to empower the people who are on the ground to go do it. And I think that's a beautiful part of what our community is all about. And I do dream, I want to end on a light note, because I know there's felt some tension here tonight, but like, I dream of a community that is interconnected with walking paths and biking paths, that as you are traveling along between them, those spaces that need to be maintained contain green areas with fruits and vegetables, maybe, that are just growing wild and free, that we, you know, areas that don't need as much parks maintenance because they are incorporated into a larger plan for all of the city working together as one livable space. Those, I mean, there is nothing that anyone has said here that leads me to believe that a kind of future like that is not possible with continuing to build all of the structure, the basics that need to be there, as well as the components that our community can truly thrive. So I'd ask for your vote, your number one vote for Brad Clark for a city council, please.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Brad. At this time, we're going to allow our candidates the chance to exit the same way you came in. You're welcome to, please, yeah. As they do leave, please, let's thank them for their fantastic efforts tonight, for all of their thoughts, for following our rules, and just doing a great, great job.